Have the gavel with me, but I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is June 16th at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. I want to welcome everybody that is here in person and those that are joining us online. It is my honor and privilege to introduce Pastor Stanley Walker Senior, the Senior Pastor of Tabernacle Missionary Baptist Church, to provide the invocation. Reverend Walker, if you will please join us at the podium, and will you please stand for the invocation?
Everhead, thou eye-close, eternal God, we come on this day with Thanksgiving in our hearts thanking you for so many blessings, because we realize that all good and perfect gifts come from thee and thee alone. We thank you for the gift of life, and we ask, oh God, as we come, that thou will continue to bless, guide, and direct us. As we live in days that are difficult and challenging times, we ask for divine wisdom and guidance that only you can give. You said in your word, "If we lack wisdom, ask of thee." We thank you for the protection from the vicissitudes of life, harm, hurt, and danger. We thank you for family and friends. As we come, we ask, oh God, that you would grant wisdom and direction to these who are leading these, are your people, to higher heights. We pray much for our city and our state, that you continue to show favor as we come, plan and work cooperatively together for welfare and for humanity as a whole. And grant us, oh God, that what we stand in need of, and that what we stand in need of, is thee and thy presence. You said in your word, "If we acknowledge you in all that we do and say, you will direct our paths." So, God, we are acknowledging you right now and acknowledging your presence, that you give these our leaders, that what they stand in need of, and do what you do best, continue to bless and show favor over this our city and our state. And we ask today on, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reverend Walker, thank you so much for joining us today. We certainly do appreciate you providing the invocation to open up our meeting. Mr. City Manager, do we have any agenda modifications today?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 1101 has been deleted. That item was Board of Adjustment and Appeals' appointment. An item will be brought back at a future date. Also, the attachments to item 13.03, which is revisions to City Commission Policy 110, have been added to your material.
All right, colleagues, any questions about the modifications? Great. Moving forward, we are on Presentations. Mr. Manager, Mr. Doolin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think they would like both of us to go down to the floor, and Mr. Scott Dudley for the Florida League of Cities is here to make a presentation.
It was a lo- it was a lo- it took me a long time to get here. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Goode, first of all, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, I'm Scott Dudley, I'm with the Florida League of Cities. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today, and I want to thank you all for your public service, for serving on the commission here and doing the hard work and keeping Tallahassee running the way it should be running. It's a great city, I'm happy to call this place home. At the League of Cities, I'm involved in the Legislative Department, as you may know, and one of the coolest things I get to do, one of the least cool things, is deal with the legislature. One of the coolest things I get to do is, after the session is over, where we get to go around the state and honor these municipal officials that have gone above and beyond the call of duty during the course of session. We have an award that we call Home Rule Hero, and a Home Rule Hero is somebody who has really helped the league staff, the lobbying team, by either helping us figure out the impact of a piece of legislation, or making phone calls, trying to sway legislators, or e all of the above, and both of you all did that. You helped a lot with our agenda. It was a rough session, but it could have been a lot rougher had you all not weighed in and tried to help keep Home Rule safe. We talk about Home Rule in this abstract way, I just want to make sure everybody here understands really what that is. Home Rule is about the ability of the citizens in this room to have a say in what's going on in their city, and the legislature is regularly trying to take that authority away from the citizens, and they should be, first of all, mad about that, and they should be extremely thankful for you and your efforts to try to protect Home Rule. If I could, just a round of applause for your efforts, I really appreciate it. I have your...
Thank you for making one dirty, for the citizens, I appreciate it.
Scott, did the League of Cities move from across the street?
No, ma'am. I doubt we will.
I was making sure the public knew how far you had to travel.
Scott, thank you. Thank you for the honor, certainly do appreciate it. And the League of Cities does wonderful work. I am very proud that not only are we members, but every single member of this commission, Mayor Pro Tem, three Commissioners, myself, we are all involved with the League of Cities in different aspects, and we thank you all for what you do.
Mr. Mayor, if I may also, Scott, I appreciate it. Certainly is a privilege of mine, and I think it adds value to our community, as I get to work with other city managers from around the state, and we kind of commiserate a little bit, but all of our problems aren't the same, and it's really good to hear what's happening around the state, and we talk about what's happening in our hometown and the League of Cities and the organizations that it represents. It's all about being true to your community, and, you know, I often say we're uniquely Tallahassee, and it works in a way that fosters that, so thank you for allowing me to be part of that.
Yeah, and again, I know that the Mayor Pro Tem has been involved on the national level with our legislative efforts. I know that Commissioner Porter is involved with our policy committees, and I know that Commissioner Williams Cox has served on the Nominating Committee, and that Commissioner Richardson serves on the Investment Trust Board, and so we're all very pleased to serve. Thank you, certainly do appreciate it. Do we have any announcements, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir.
All right, we are on citizen input on agenda items, so Mr. Clerk, if you'll please walk us through.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have speakers at all three of our opportunities this evening. First, on agended items, we'll take those at this time. Then we do have speakers on our public hearings. We will hear from you on the public hearing at the time of those public hearings, which were announced for 5 o'clock. We also have speakers on our unagended, on unagended topics, and those speakers will be heard at the very end of the meeting. So at this time, we'll begin with the agenda items. We have several speakers here in person, and we do have a couple of people connected via WebEx, but we'll take those in person first. Our first speaker will be Luke Strickland. Speakers will come to the microphone here in the center of the room where Mr. Dudley just spoke. Each speaker will have three minutes for remarks, and there is a light there in front of the mayor that will be green and ultimately turn yellow and red as your time runs down to zero. So Luke Strickland, on item 1202.
Strickland, thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Luke Strickland, 1000 North Duval, Tallahassee, Florida. Really, I'm just here to answer any questions that y'all might, may have about 12.02.
Excellent. I tell you what, if you wouldn't mind sticking around until 12.02, if there's questions at the time, we'll bring you back up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have Benjamin Kelly similarly available for questions, and I think that's correct, yep.
Mr. Kelly, is that on 12? Please come up and introduce yourself, your name and address.
Yes, Benjamin Kelly, 433 North Magnolia Drive, Tallahassee, Florida.
Thanks, Mr. Kelly, appreciate it.
Next is Carrie Litherland, on item 1302. She also was speaking, but on public hearing items that we'll take at that time.
Ms. Litherland, good to see you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. So, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Carrie Litherland, and my address is 1336 Jackson Street, 32301. And today, I am here as the Chair of the Alliance of Tallahassee Neighborhoods, or more commonly referred to as ATN, speaking on the adoption of the Neighborhood Notification Engagement and Involvement Policy. Using our combined knowledge, expertise, and energy, ATN builds consensus on critical issues and takes what we call constructive action. We believe that citizen participation in city development processes is vital to a successful future for Tallahassee. The majority of our work is on these constructive issues and proactive actions, such as the Neighborhood Notification Engagement and Involvement Policy before you today. We actually have our first two projects, years in the making, before you tonight, so we're very excited. ATN Supermember Mario Taylor first brought up the idea of the Neighborhood Bill of Rights, like those implemented in places like Jacksonville and others, to implement here in our community almost three years ago to solidify the policy, the city of Tallahassee's commitment to neighborhoods' proper and quality notification and involvement in city process, as well as update a policy that was last updated before I was born. Through years of work with staff, Mario alongside ATN member and past Board Chair Mike Brazin, we have the product before you today. We are thankful to Ashley Edwards, the Neighborhood Affairs Team that she leads, and are proud to say, after the hard work of her, her team, and ATN members Mario and Mike, what is in front of you is something to be proud of. Proper and quality notification is essential for fair and equitable processes, and the commitment to it will, hopefully upon your approval, be codified in policy. It may not have the title that we wished for, which would have shown a very strong commitment to neighborhoods, but it has the content we are hoping for, and that also shows a strong commitment to neighborhoods. We appreciate your time and attention to this issue and look forward to working with you and city staff to make Tallahassee as best as it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie, would you like to introduce your special guest that you have with you as well?
Did you want to say hi? This is Scarlett.
Hi, Scarlett, welcome to your City Hall. Thank you, appreciate it, Carrie. Our next speaker.
Our next speaker is Michael McLaughlin, speaking on item 903 and 1305, each of which are grant items.
Great. Mr. McLaughlin, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael McLaughlin. I'm at 100 Cadiz Street. So for the first item, I'm happy to see the city of Tallahassee utilizing grant money to provide free public transportation for disadvantaged city residents. Transportation is a human right, and I encourage the city to develop and implement, and continue to develop and implement, ways to make our local public transportation affordable, more accessible, and more convenient for our most disadvantaged neighbors. For the other item, following, regarding the police grant, following the passage of HB1, it is imperative that we never increase the budget for our police department. I'm sure Mayor Daley and Manager Goode, as Home Rule Heroes, you're very aware of this. While it is key that this money from this grant is from a grant and is not being put into the, directly into the police's budget, the still, the fundings could still be better spent. Rather than spending over $25,000 on military-style defense equipment to be used in the exceptionally rare case of police responding to a violent offender, the city should seek out and use grant money to create social services, such as improved mental health resources, which would help prevent the sort of situations where TPD feels it is necessary for their officers to wear tactical vests. The people do not want a militarized police force. We want and deserve a community where resources are put towards supporting our well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Next is Shelby Green, speaking on item 1301.
Ms. Green, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Board, my name is Shelby Green, and my address is 519 Ingleside Avenue. Let me pull up my notes. So I'm here today to talk on the neighborhood policy. I support the policy, but some critique that I have of it is we have 4,200 homes that are without utilities. I want to know how this policy will help provide information to these homes. The Neighborhood Affairs Department did not communicate any information about the moratorium ending, or about services that the, that the city and also the state are providing for utility debt relief. This policy is great, but it is missing effective and concrete plans. When people are without utilities, they need information, and I don't see how this policy is going to notify people through neighborhoods and get them the information that they need. So I support the policy, but it is missing that actual implementation plan to get information from the city into the hands of residents who need it the most. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Mayor, that's the last of our in-person speakers. We will go to those connected via WebEx at this time. We have two individuals, both on item 12.02. The first is David Theriak, and we will hear from him as soon as the connection is there.
Mr. Theriak, are you with us, sir? Mr. Theriak?
I see his name on the board, so I think he's there.
Mr. Theriak? Let's move to the next, and we'll come back.
Okay. Next is Tyler Graybill. Tyler Graybill.
Tyler Graybill.
Yes, sir.
Yes, your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir, loud and clear, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Just in addition to Ben and Luke, I'm here to answer any questions that may arise, so I'll just be awaiting, but, you know, we got some manpower here, so we're just, we're just here to clarify anything if, if any questions arise.
Great, thank you so much. Mr. Theriak, are you with us? Mr. Theriak?
And Mayor, he's the only other speaker I have at this portion of the meeting, so once we hear from him or do not, you can move forward.
We'll try one more time. Dave Theriak, are you with us? All right. Do we have any other speakers?
We have no other speakers at this time. We do have a number of speakers on public hearings, we'll call them as each of those items comes forward.
Excellent. We are on appearances by City Commission-appointed boards, committees, and other governments. At this time, I would like to adjourn the City Commission meeting. I would now like to call the Sinking Fund Commission to order and turn it over to Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. As we transition, our two committee members who are here, or commission members who are here with us, William MacLeod and Bill Christensen are here with us. We do have a third member, or a third appointed member, that is Nan Hillis, and Ms. Hillis was unable to join us due to a scheduling conflict, but was at our committee meeting a month ago. So what we have for you tonight, as the Sinking Fund Commission, the five elected officials, and then the three appointed citizens, provide guidance and direction for how we manage and invest the city's funds, both operating and pension. The first item, item 8.01, is, is the first item we're bringing to you. There are a few changes, and this is in our non-pension policy item, the changes are in a black line version attached, so you and any citizens could see what was there, but the most significant change we're recommending is, in our investment categories, to allow an additional 5% of the portfolio to be invested in corporate securities, and an additional 5% in municipal securities. So the corporates are just that, municipals are people like us who are issuing, issuing bonds. We talk about our issuance of bonds, we also buy and invest in others. This does not add any new security types, so we're not making a major change there, nor does it change the fact that we at all times have to keep 20% in government-backed securities. And then, as we're buying those securities, there have just been some changes over time in how some of the rating agencies work. Some of our municipal issuers don't get as many ratings as they used to, so we're proposing that we go to requiring one rating instead of two there. And on the corporate side, there's a new rating agency, DBRS Morningstar, that we see used more and more, and so we're providing an opportunity to, to be sure we can use, use them on the corporate side. And then the last piece is just a change to the, to the benchmark. When we analyze our performance, we had a government credit benchmark, this proposed is called Government Credit XBAA, and what that means is, it excludes things rated BAA. We can't invest in those anyway, so it wasn't appropriate to be benchmarked against something that we couldn't do, so this gives us an appropriate benchmark. So those are the items we're recommending for change. If you take action, it's just one action to approve staff recommendation of the policy. We did meet with our Investment Advisory Committee in, in May and talk about this at length before we got to this point, so that's the item.
Great, thank you. And gentlemen, thank you so much for your service to the city, certainly do appreciate it. So, opening up for discussion, motions?
Move Option 1.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Commissioner Porter, staff recommendation for Option Number 1, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 7-0. We're on item number 8.02, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the second item is pension investment. So the first one dealt with our operating money, our non-pension money, this deals with our pension investments. The policy is attached to the item, but we are not recommending any changes to our policy. What we have here is, within our policy, we do not want to be more than 10% of a given fund that we're invested in. In other words, we don't want the city to be sole source of funds that a manager is managing. And our policy says that if we exceed that 10% number, that we need to bring it to the Sinking Fund Commission for approval, so kind of the guardrails serving as they're supposed to. We have one manager, Wedge Capital, who is now at, we're 12% of the, the fund we're invested in with them. We're recommending the exception to allow us to continue with Wedge. They've managed, probably are our longest-serving money manager, and have done a really good job for us over time. Will obviously continue to monitor it. Also, we're 12% of this particular product, but they invest a number of other products as well, so we're not that significant in their overall portfolio. But, that's what our guidelines say, so we bring it to you, recommending the exception to allow us to maintain our current investment with Wedge.
Excellent. Okay, let's open it up. Any comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Motions? Yes, sir, Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and just for clarification, we're not updating the policy from 10%, we're just allowing it to go to 12%?
That's correct. No changes to the policy, so if we had another manager where we found ourselves exceeding 10%, we again would have to bring that back to you. This does not change our policy in any way.
Okay. And if we see this one start to creep up above 12%, we would, it would come back to us?
Right. And, and as the, the appointed members of the Sinking Fund Commission are part of a quarterly meeting where we monitor these things, and so we'll be keeping an eye on that to see if it falls back below 10%. If we see deterioration, we'll certainly bring it back.
Okay, great. I'll move Option 1.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Matlow. Is there a seconded motion? Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Is there any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes, 7-0. Clerk, do we have any other business coming before us?
No, sir, not on this item. I will say that our members are, are talkative, but they, they did it in our previous meeting, so they surprised me here, but there's plenty of input, thank you.
Gentlemen, once again, thank you so much. These are very technical, detailed issues, and you all serve us very well, and we're very appreciative of it. Okay, so at this time, I will adjourn the Sinking Fund Commission and reconvene the City of Tallahassee City Commission meeting at 3:25.
Mr. Mayor, as you, as you do that, I would like to take advantage of this opportunity.
Please.
As, as our members are leaving, Kent Olson is our Deputy Treasurer Clerk, wanted to point out that this will be his last meeting with us, following Rob McGarrett's lead. He is retiring. Unlike Rob, he has worked with other local governments in Florida, and we were able to bring him here nine years ago. He's done a great job for us, the items we just talked about, he led on those. More importantly, he, like many, got to Tallahassee and realized this is a great place, so he'll be retiring but staying right here.
All right.
Kent, congratulations.
Congratulations.
On a personal note, I have thoroughly enjoyed working with you for the past two and a half years. You have been absolutely fantastic. You're one of the best in the business, respected statewide as a leader in the association and former president, and have served the city well, and we certainly appreciate it. On a personal note, I don't know, you're the only one that calls me your honor, so I don't know what I'm going to do after this. I didn't know if you were messing with me or what, but it was always a fun joke. But Kent, thank you so much for everything. Certainly do appreciate it.
He's staying in town?
Standing in town.
You may continue to call him your honor.
There you go, there you go.
All right, Kent.
All right, Mr. Manager, we're now on the consent agenda. Have any consent items been pulled off, off the agenda?
No, sir.
All right.
Move acceptance.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. All those in favor of consent signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. 11.01 has been deleted, we're on item number 11.02, the Architectural Review Board Appointments and Reappointments. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is, as you described, appointments and reappointments. We have one individual who is eligible to continue and is being recommended for reappointment. Two individuals newly appointed, each of them taking the place of someone who has either vacated a seat or whose term is expiring. Those three are recommended for your approval.
Excellent. Colleagues?
Move staff recommendation to accept the appointments and reappointments.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on the introduction of ordinance, number 12.01. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12.01 is introduction of ordinance number 21-0-24, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending sections 14-1.001, 14-3.302, 14-3.310, and 14-3.317, and creating in Article III, Sections 14-3.400 through 14-3.431, in the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, relating to public police officers' pension benefits and contributions, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is Option 1, introduce ordinance number 21-0-24 to amend the pension ordinance for the PBA bargaining unit for police officers and investigators to align with the terms of the collective bargaining, bargaining agreement, and set the first and only public hearing for July 7, 2021, at 5:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. The action that is to be taken is the formal reading of it into the, the record, which is the recommended action for Option Number 1. Any questions, comments, motions?
Move staff recommendation for Option Number 1.
Commissioner Richardson has properly moved the staff recommendation, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Been seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. 12.02, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 12.02, introduction of ordinance number 21-Z-21, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory located on 3.009 acres at 3611 and 3613 Woodville Highway, as an end general commercial C2 from office residential OR-2 on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the City Commission, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is Option 1, introduce ordinance number 21-Z-21, and set the first and only public hearing for July 7, 2021, at 5:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. The recommended action is to read the introduction of the ordinance into the record. We have done so, that is Option Number 1. Is there any motions or discussion?
Move acceptance.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on policy formation and direction, item number 13.01. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And while I introduce this, if I can ask that we pull up WebEx, our Division Head, John Baker, is also joining me for this item. You've heard a little bit about it earlier, this item seeks your approval and adoption of a proposed Neighborhood Notification Engagement and Involvement Policy. We've had that policy for many years, this is an update. It provides for how the city engages with neighborhoods and types of services that the city provides. In 2017, the Neighborhood Affairs... In 2017, the Neighborhood Affairs Division was expanded to reemphasize the city's longstanding commitment to neighborhood engagement. As I mentioned, it is led by John Baker for the division. Ashley Edwards is our department director, and we have grown that division to seven members, and they are very, very active, highly engaged, and continuing to be engaged with our neighborhoods to make sure that the many things that the city does to touch the neighborhoods, that they're informed of, and we have good collaboration, and this policy certainly adds to that. ATN, which is the Alliance for Tallahassee Neighborhoods, it is a group of neighborhoods in our community. They have been involved. You heard earlier from Carrie Litherland about that, and staff also reached out to Kona, which is another neighborhood organization, and shared this information with them as well. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, if I could just have John Baker go over a few details of this policy.
Mr. Baker, thank you for joining us. Ms. Edwards, thank you for joining us as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, Mr. Manager, thank you for the opportunity to provide a brief overview of the neighborhood notification, engagement, and involvement policy. As you have heard, the city's strong support for neighborhoods go way back when the city, over 40-plus years ago, established an office dedicated to providing services to neighborhood as well as support for neighborhood organization. In 1984, the city adopted a neighborhood outreach policy. The policy was last amended in 1992. The proposed neighborhood notification and engagement policy updates that policy to reflect how the city currently engages with neighborhoods, the services the city provides to neighborhoods, and the role Neighborhood Affairs play in supporting our neighborhoods. To a large extent, the policy before you codifies existing operations with respect to neighborhoods. And first off, the policy addresses notification. Over the years since we have been brought together, one of the big things that we have heard from neighborhood is notification of city operation. And so foremost, the city, the policy addresses that. It provides for notification and framework for how we will notify neighborhoods, will notify neighborhoods about opportunities, provide input on the design of city-funded projects occurring adjacent or near neighborhoods. They'll receive advance notification of the construction, installation of any significant city-related public infrastructure or utility projects, again, taking place near or adjacent to a neighborhood. Through this policy, we have codified sending out notification of any application for rezoning, and this work here is supplementary to what's done by planning and growth management. They will also be notified of opportunities to provide input in the city's strategic planning process or annual budget process, and including opportunities for them to express neighborhood preferences in terms of spending priorities. There'll also be notified of opportunities to nominate individuals to serve on various advisory boards or citizen review board that the city will establish from time to time. And for neighborhoods to receive these services, they will have to be registered with the city. Now, the policy does not require them to register with the city, but it does state that if they would like to receive these services, it's important that they register with us and keep their information current. The second section of the policy deals with Neighborhood Affairs, the role that we play, as well as the role other city departments play in keeping neighborhoods updated, providing and getting input from neighborhoods. And so I won't go in detail on that section of the policy. But in closing, we have worked with ATN in the development of this policy. We have also have conversation with Kona, and we had solicited input from all registered city department. Internally, we have worked with all relevant city departments, and the policy before you reflects their input to date. So thank you for the opportunity to present, and I am available for any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Baker, on a personal note, I thoroughly enjoyed participating in the Providence Neighborhood Association meeting with you the other night. Thank you for your time, and keep up the great work.
Thank you, sir.
All right, let's open it up for discussion. Yes, Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to say this is certainly a welcome update to this policy. I began my work with neighborhoods back in 19, gosh, what was it, 1995, when my wife and I built our home and, of course, moved into our neighborhood. And we didn't have an organized neighborhood association at the time, and so I worked with my neighbors to organize our neighborhood association. We started a crime watch program at the same time. Later, I would become a vice president of Kona and was active in neighborhood organizations such as Kona for quite some time. And as we know, with Tallahassee growing the way that it is, and we've got many well-established neighborhoods, newly formed neighborhoods, I think, again, this is a welcome update of our policy and how we interact with those neighborhoods, so that we can get feedback from them on issues that will impact those neighborhoods as we move forward. And so I want to thank the city manager for his leadership, Ashley and John and the staff in Neighborhood Affairs for the work that they have done, working with organizations like ATN and Kona, to bring this policy update forward. And so with that, I would like to move that we adopt staff recommendation for Option Number 1.
Option Number 1 has been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Been seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any further comment, Commissioner Williams Cox, and then Mayor Pro Tem, and then Commissioner Porter?
I too want to congratulate and thank staff for this update on neighborhoods. I'm happy to see in the audience my Neighborhood Association President and Ramona Abernathy-Payne, and I know she's happy to see this, and I bet she had something to do with it. But one of the things that this also brings to light is, in reference to some of the things that we've been hearing about utility disconnects, Ramona said to me just today, because she's one of those Neighborhood Association Presidents that is very proactive. So what she has done is she has gone through our neighborhood to determine who was having issues, and what she found was information that we have not been getting in, you know, the comments that we're getting from citizens about disconnect, and it's very important information. And I'm hoping that she'll be around at the end, because I want to ask her to share, because I think that what we can do with this information is neighborhoods can be responsible for checking on their neighbors to see if there is something that is being missed. And I think that this policy goes a long ways in helping to put the neighbor, put the neighbor back in the neighborhood to help us do what we need to do to make sure that our neighborhoods are strong and make sure the neighbors in the neighborhoods are strong. So I ask that at the end, if we could indulge Ramona to share what she's learned from the neighborhood about what's going on.
Abernathy-Payne, would you like to join us? It's germane to the issue at hand.
It is.
Mm-hmm.
She didn't know she was going to be called on, so if she seems to be a little shy or nervous.
She might have a word with you after the meeting, Commissioner Williams Cox, for calling her on the carpet like this.
If you know Ramona, she's not shy or nervous.
Hey, thank you for joining us.
Do you need my name and address for the record?
That'd be great.
Ramona Abernathy-Payne, 2006 East Indian Head Drive. While I am the president of the Indian Head Lehigh Neighborhood Association, I am here on my own recognizance tonight. We had gotten the list of, the information that was presented to us was a list of addresses where utilities had been disconnected perpetually, purportedly for lack of payment, and a list of addresses that were impending being disconnected. Looking at the list, there were problems with the data, there were duplicates on both lists where the same address was listed more than one place. There was one address that was listed twice on the already disconnected and twice on the going to be disconnected. I shared the list with my board, and when we did a little further checking, for our neighborhood at least, there were, there was an address that had been disconnected, but the house was empty because the people had died and the house, the property was in probate. There was a house that had been, the utilities had been disconnected because a couple that was living there had gotten married, and they changed the account from his name to her name, so that involved a disconnect. There was a neighbor who was not on the list but shared the information that he wouldn't have gotten any notices anyway because his landlord, who lives in California, pays the utilities, and all of the, any mailouts would have gone to her. So we felt pretty good that we don't have a problem in Indian Head except for poor Bill Huley, whose house burned last night on the other side of the creek from me. His utilities were cut off because of the fire. Anything else?
That's it. I wanted to share that information because that's what neighborhoods, we're encouraging neighborhoods to look in on neighbors to make sure that we're all good. And I think that this update of the policy helps us to take a look at this and be, and put neighbor back in the neighborhood and make sure that we're all good.
I very much appreciate the policy and all that John Baker and Ashley Edwards have done with working with us on all levels of neighborhood involvement.
Thank you, Ramona. And thank you, Mayor.
Hey, that's great. Thank you. Thanks for serving as President of Neighborhood Association. Thanks for those comments, very helpful. I'm sorry, who did, who did we have? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, thank you to John Baker and staff that worked on this, as well as all the citizen volunteers that have, you know, put in the time and the work. They don't get paid, they just want to see a better city and a better community. I think it's really admirable to just engage with our government to come up with great policies like this. You know, we, we're going to continue to try to communicate in the most effective ways we can. One of the first things we did when I got on the commission was we expanded the radius of notifications for new developments, and we included tenants as well as property owners, because I think it's very important that everybody gets notified. And I think this is just another step in a great direction, because we do care about communicating with the public. We do care that people know what's going on, because we don't want to hear from the public the day before an important decision. We want them to know well in advance that things are coming. And we know communication is ever-changing. We were talking at the CRTPA yesterday about legal notices and newspapers, and I think that reaches probably zero. And as communications develop, we have social media, text messaging, there's just so many new ways to communicate with the public, and I'm just glad so many neighborhoods are involved and working to make sure we can build a better Tallahassee together. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with everything that's been said. I think this is the right direction that we're going in. We've all experienced it, you've all experienced it, frustration with just the lack of information or timeliness. I have a few questions, and I want to thank ATN, all of the staff, and Mario Taylor in particular. So, Mr. Manager, we talked about this a little bit yesterday during our briefing, but can you confirm for me, is this going to be available for individuals to sign up for as well? People who are not a part of a neighborhood association, or if there is not an active neighborhood association?
Yeah, let me ask Mr. Baker to detail how that, the mechanics of that and how that would work. John, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Please go.
All right. So this, thank you, Mr. Manager. This policy applies to neighborhood organization, but through the city's subscription services, any individual can go to the city's website and sign up for notifications. A whole bunch of notifications are available there, and they can subscribe to that. If a citizen contact us, we will put them on this list that we sent out, and they will receive the same things that we're sending to neighborhood leaders as well.
Okay, thank you. And does that include the Community Weekly newsletter?
Yes. So if anyone who contacts us and says they'd like to get it, we will put them on the list.
Okay. And I would just like, if we can make that as clear as possible to people, so they don't, you know, the average person probably doesn't have the knowledge that that exists, and if they just, all they have to do is ask, so if we can maybe add that to the website, so that it's, it might already be there, but that would be, you know, my only comment. And I've made comments in the past about ways that we can use the new technology that there is to do pings and notifications, and so I'm glad that we're moving in this direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no further comment, there is a motion on the table made by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Did I get that straight?
No.
No.
Opposite.
Sorry. Commissioner Richardson made the motion for the record, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. 13.02, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, sir. This item seeks your approval to continue the partnership with the Big Ben Habitat for Humanity, which is in direct support of the city's strategic plan related to affordable housing. Over the last several years, city staff has, with their own hands and city resources, helped work with the Habitat for Humanity to build 11 homes. And this partnership would be for three homes to continue, this year, to continue toward that end. I'd like to recognize Anton Wright, which many, I think everybody knows Anton, and it's always great to work with him and his staff, and they do a great job. I'd like to recognize him in attendance tonight. And then I'd like Gene Amison, our Housing Division Manager, to provide just a bit of an overview of how this works.
Excellent. Gene, why don't you start us off?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. Thank you for the opportunity to present on this innovative partnership opportunity. Big Ben Habitat for Humanity plays an important role in providing affordable housing in Tallahassee. Using a national model that includes financial donations and volunteer labor, Habitat builds single-family homes that are affordable to low-income families, constructing 10 to 12 new homes annually in the community. So this action specifically advances the 2024 strategic plan goal of the impact on poverty, objective 2C, to facilitate and encourage the construction of affordable housing units. The city set a goal to construct 10 Habitat Homes of the course of the five-year strategic plan period with the city build model. We've participated in three Habitat Homes since the inception of the strategic plan, putting us on course to meet this goal. So to become a sponsor of a home, Habitat requests a cash donation of $65,000 and a commitment to provide a minimum of 200 hours of volunteer labor per home. These resources are matched with an eligible Habitat client who, together with the sponsor, participates in the construction of the home. Since 2017, the city has partnered with Habitat to construct two to three homes annually through the state community contribution tax credit program. That is a mouthful, so I said it slowly. This program provides tax rebates to encourage contributions to approved community development and housing projects which benefit low-income persons. The city is eligible to participate in the program because it collects state sales tax in its utilities operations. In addition to the financial contribution, city employees and other volunteers provide volunteer labor to build the home, and the city also donates city-owned parcels to the effort. This model has proven successful in providing affordable homes for deserving families. So far, the city has partnered with Habitat to build 11 homes with over 5,400 hours of staff volunteers hours. The success of Tallahassee's innovative program has inspired several similar efforts across Florida. Staff is recommending that the city continue this program and support the construction of three additional homes in 2021. The innovative partnership provides a meaningful engagement and service opportunity for city employees. A highlight of last year's partnership, even through COVID, we built three, was the completion of a handicap-accessible home for a family member who suffers from cerebral palsy, and an award from the Warwick Dunn Charities to fully furnish the home. In addition, there will be a dedication of another city-built home later this month, the date and time to be determined. So our recommendation is to approve the expenditure of $195,000 from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the donation of up to three city-owned parcels to sponsor the construction of three Habitat Homes. The city... The city expects to recoup most of its financial contribution through the tax rebate, which would then be returned to the trust fund. Thank you.
Ms. Amison, first of all, thank you for bringing this item before us. This is very exciting, and I'm sure that I join with my colleagues, and we are moving forward. On a personal note, I have thoroughly enjoyed working with you and Director Ojitaio and all of the housing staff as a new member of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and I'm truly amazed each and every time we meet at the great work that y'all are doing. Please keep it up.
Thank you, sir.
Anton, thank you so much for everything that you and Habitat do. You're incredible community partners. Thank you. With that, we'll open it up for other comments, discussion, and motions.
Move Option One.
Second.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox and seconded by Commissioner Porter. Option number one, which is recommended. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And as a Star Wars fan, may the force be with you. We are on item number thirteen point oh three. Mr. Manager, excuse me, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Flir.
This item is bringing back City Commission Policy 110. At a recent meeting, you asked us to bring this back. There were a couple of things that were identified. We also, in my office, work very closely with the Office of the City Attorney. The policy was due for a sunset review as well, so in addition to whatever items were brought to our attention.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
In addition to whatever items you brought to our attention, we reviewed the policy thoroughly and have brought it back with a revised policy for your approval or comment. There are highlights added in the proposed policy where there were either significant changes or additions. I can walk through what some of those are, but I think they are fairly self-evident. So with that, I will turn it to you for discussion and action.
Excellent. Madam Attorney, anything?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, great. Let's open it up for discussion, comments, motions.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm so, okay. We've got a motion on the table for staff recommendation by the Mayor Protim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Williams-Cox, you're recognized.
I wanted to just, since we do have highlighted portions in the document, for the public, for the purpose of the public, why don't we just mention what those are, just so that those who don't have access to this will know?
Great. Mr. Cook, give us a brief overview.
Be glad to do that. Thank you. There were several items, and I'll just kind of run through them. Some of them were things that may have been in place but needed to be stated specifically in the policy, particularly where they relate to Florida statute, making sure that our policy reflects those things. So there's a prohibition against dual office holding for certain committees that have defined responsibilities, and so we included that as a new item, made some very specific references to our sunshine law, public records law, both in terms of how advisory boards and committees' materials are subject to public records requests, and that individual members need to be aware of that, including their own communications related to the committee, but also regarding responses to public records requests. If someone on a committee gets a question, they can refer that to our office. There's nothing wrong with them providing information, but it certainly helps if it comes through the city so that we can be sure we provide a comprehensive response. There are procedures added, a section added, for committees that have individual appointments by city commissioners. So the last time we looked at this policy, we did not have committees where there were individual appointments by individual commissioners, and so we wanted to make sure the policy reflects procedures to do that, acknowledges them, make sure those committees are identified as well. There's discussion of city commissioner attendance or participation in meetings, more attendance than participation, I should say, but provides for that, and that applies to advisory committees that don't have a commissioner. Obviously, there are some committees where you are specifically appointed as the city's representative and would be fully active there. And then, the last item I would mention, there are provisions just for terms of service where when someone completes two terms, most boards and committees have a two-term limit, and so that it specifically states that somebody must come off for a year before they could be reappointed, clarifies that, as well as some of the terms about staggering and when new committees are put in place. So I think that covers the major items. If you've got any questions, we'll try to answer them.
Commissioner Williams-Cox, you still have the floor.
Thank you. I didn't hear you mention item number 12. Maybe I missed it. Item number 12 in section...
That's...
Part four.
Yeah, part four, section A, item 12. I did make reference, maybe I didn't make it as clear as I could have, but that was where I was making reference to city commission member participation in boards and committees. So this item states that obviously you, as all of our other citizens, can attend any citizen committee meeting, but this encourages you not to direct the work of those committees so that those committees can do their work and then provide response to you as a full commission.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I was, and not overstepped what I'm doing. Thank you.
All right. Any further comment? Motion on the table for approvals by the Mayor Protim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. See no further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Item number thirteen point oh four. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item requests your approval to utilize a joint contract that's issued by Gainesville Regional Utilities on behalf of several utility partners for the purchase of cable and wire for our electric utility. By doing the joint partnership, it increases our scale and buying power that naturally results in lower prices. And so specifically, we're seeking to approve the use of Gainesville Regional Utilities Contract Number 2021-005 for the purchase of electric distribution wire and cable as detailed in the agenda item for a three-year term and potential subsequent contract extensions. Richard Ash from our electric and gas utility is available if you have any questions.
Excellent. Colleagues, questions, comments, motions?
Move staff recommendation to approve Option One.
Second.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Porter. For Option Number One, the recommended action. See no further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Item number thirteen point oh five. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, sir. This item is regarding a grant that the city of Tallahassee jointly with Leon County on behalf of the Sheriff's Department is eligible for. The grant is approximately $90,000. It's the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, or JAG. The program requires that the city and the Leon County Sheriff's Office reach a consensus, so there's collaboration on the front side about how the funds can be best utilized between the two agencies. The recommended allocation is for drug and alcohol testing program by the Leon County Sheriff's Office of approximately $38,000. Miscellaneous office equipment by the Leon County Sheriff's Office of approximately $26,000, and equipment that is eight entry vests and associated rifle plates of approximately $26,000 for the Tallahassee Police Department. I have representatives from the Tallahassee Police Department, including Chief Revel here if you have any questions.
Excellent. Let's open it up. Any questions, discussions, motions?
Move.
Commissioner Porter.
I just have some questions for the chief, if he's on.
Chief Revel, if you're available, please, sir. Thank you for joining us. You do not have to provide your name and address for the record.
Two thirty-fourth seventh.
Aye, thank you. I just had a few questions for clarification and for the benefit of the public. If you could explain how we determine, how we, you know, when these grant funds become available, how we determine how we're going to spend them? Like, is there a list of things, and once money becomes available, we spend them? Just if you could explain the process and the need?
Right. We prioritize our needs within the department. You know, we have, obviously, the budget. Only two and a half percent of that budget is actually for equipment and supply, so we definitely look outside for other grants and opportunities for funding for these type of things. We have traditionally used the JAG grant because it applies to supply the tactical vest, because they are an expenditure, a fairly large expenditure, and they recur every five years. That's the life of the vest. It's, you know, well within the confines of that grant, so we have done that historically, I'm not going to ask Gary, but at least 10 years. So we have continued to do that. So yeah, we prioritize our needs within the department. Obviously, you know, we are the premier law enforcement agency within this region. All you have to do is look at the news lately to see the shootings that have occurred around the country, and we have to be prepared to respond to those type of events. And in order to do that, we have specially trained people to do that, and we have to outfit them properly. So this is a source of funding that we can use for that, and we've utilized for the last 10 years.
And can you say, and thank you for that, and can you say just a little bit more about what the money can be used for?
That's why I brought my chief executive officer.
Okay.
Gary Williams. Gary Williams, he can definitely speak to that.
Mr. Williams, thanks for joining us. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Gary Williams, TPD Financial Officer. The grant money can be used for anything within the criminal justice system, including enforcement, equipment, court, probation items, any, pretty much anything involved in criminal justice, any aspect of that, which it is a county-wide program, and that's why some of the money is for that purpose, used for that purpose.
And what I'm hearing too is that just traditionally for the past decade or so, anytime this grant becomes, we've sort of earmarked it for these supplies because we can anticipate their age, you know, when they age out?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we use it for all different types of equipment, not just tactical equipment. The tactical gear comes every five years because of the expiration of the warranties that are on the equipment, so we know every five years we're going to have to do this.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to congratulate the chief and thank him for his leadership in being creative in looking for these types of grants to augment the budget that we provide. It's important that our officers are safe out there. We see what's happening across the country. We may not be immune to it in Tallahassee. I pray that it doesn't happen here, but they need the equipment that is necessary to be safe and to protect our community. And so, chief, thank you for going after these kinds of grants to augment the budget that we provide through the city.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is that a motion?
That'd be a motion.
Okay. Commissioner Richardson has properly moved the staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Commissioner Williams-Cox, you have the floor.
I was just going to second the motion.
Okay. Any other comment? See none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Mr. Manager, thank you very much, chief. Do we have any other business come before us under policy formation and direction?
No, sir, we do not.
Colleagues, we have been extremely efficient today. How about that? It is 4:04. Now, we have a publicly advertised public hearing at 5:00, which we've also advertised unagenda business speakers, so I think it would be unfair, anyone that was planning on coming at the end of the meeting to speak, to speak now. However, it's up to the commission. I'm looking at y'all for direction. Would you like to go ahead and just take a break now and come back at 5:00? Or would you like to go ahead and take care of the sharing of ideas? We have plenty of time to do that now, and then we would come back at 5:00 and do the public hearings and unagenda business speakers.
Sharing of ideas.
All right. Let's move forward. Commissioner Porter, floor is yours.
Um, I wasn't quite ready for sharing of ideas. Is anyone else ready?
I can go.
Okay.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Okay. I have two items. One deals with, I want to say congratulations to Capitol Park, 13, 14-year-old baseball. Y'all know I used to manage that park. They're headed to the Disney Dean World Series in Mississippi to represent the city of Tallahassee. I'm very, very proud of that, but they need some help. So y'all go out there, there's a GoFundMe, talking to my neighbors, put the neighbor back in the neighborhood. Go out there and help them get there. These individuals, these young men, are from the south side of town, and I heard a lot last night about what we could be, what we could do for the south side of town. So here's something that we can do to help these young people get to Mississippi to represent the city of Tallahassee and be exposed to what baseball can do for you. The other thing I wanted to mention is, we heard a lot of conversation last night, again at the blueprint meeting, about what's happening with the south side. And so, would you put that? Thank you. This is the South Side Action Plan boundary. Within those boundaries, these are the kinds of things that are taking place, to the tune of $215 million that's taking place on the south side. I want to make sure that we understand that with the streets and sidewalks, $144,820, that's with the city, CRA, and blueprint. Stormwater projects, $13 million. Water and sewer improvements, $37 million. Community housing and human service projects, $5 million. Electric and gas projects, let me see, my print too small, $10 million. Parks and Rec and Neighborhood Affairs, $4 million. Community beautification and waste management, $99,000, and other community service of $190,000. That comes to $215 million. There's a community redevelopment, other projects that come to a little over $6 million. And there are, okay, thank you. Those projects include the pedestrian and street safety project over on Xyla Street, MUA Phase Four, South Bruno Street to Monroe Street, South City Country Club Creek Drainage Improvements, the Tempo Facility, the underground utility municipal service complex expansion. That's the old Rose Printing Building. Believe it or not, there's a lot of activity going on in there. It may not look like it, but there's a lot of work going on in there. Fire Station Number 17 at Lake Bradford is also included. The Tallahassee Community Redevelopment Agency has done tremendous work with the Greater Bond Community, the Greater French Town, the Greater French Town South Side Business Facility Improvement Program is at play, the Disaster Grant Assistance was at play, on and on and on, a list of things that have taken place, Orange Avenue Apartments, that are taking place in the south side of town. Hot off the press, I'm getting as I speak, I'm told, I want to share this information, that the surveys that have been collected, we've collected over 400 surveys, 410 surveys to date, and over 1,000 views have hit this website. If you haven't been to the website, then you too can go talgov.com/southside. If you haven't done the survey, please go there and do the survey. We want to know what you want to have happen on the south side. We got real current themes that residents are saying about the south side. They want beautification, they want funding, they want affordable housing opportunities, and they want resource, they want to learn more about the resources that are available. A quick fact, residential homes and neighborhoods make up over a third of the south side land use. It's primarily, primarily, single-family homes followed by apartments and mobile homes. The second most common land use on the south side are vacant land and open space. This shows opportunities for future investment and recognizes all of the existing amenities like parks and golf courses that are already there. So how to get involved? Go to talgov.com/southside and let us know what you want to have happen. I did this because last night we kept hearing at the blueprint meeting what could happen with monies on the south side. Well, it's not just coulda, 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 it is happening, and we invite you to join us in this effort and what we're doing. We have great momentum, and we want to keep it going. The middle word, the operative word of this plan is called action. And so the South Side Action Plan is well underway. Get on board, because we're hitting the gas, and we're going to make this happen. Thank you.
That was a wonderful summary of the projects that we have going on. Thank you very much. I would be remiss, you know, I think we were all caught off a little bit off guard. It was also mentioned last night by Commissioner Proctor about eight precincts with utility issues, and would like to remind those neighborhoods that are in the unincorporated area that if they would like to incorporate voluntarily, of course, we will roll out the red carpet and do everything that we possibly can to bring them into the fold to make sure that that happens. They also do have a voice on the Citizens Utility Advisory Committee as well, but those neighborhoods that he was referring to are actually in the unincorporated area. They are not in the city of Tallahassee, and we'll do everything we can to work with them if they would like to incorporate, so. Commissioner Williams-Cox, anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Great. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, two things. I wanted to add to Commissioner Williams-Cox's list is the walking part that's in the works now for Orange Avenue, South Meridian, $5 million for the Star Metro Transfer Facility at South Meridian and Orange Avenue, and $10 million for Leon County Fairground improvements through the CRA. So lots is happening, and that was a point I tried to make last night. A lot of people don't know, but as Commissioner Williams-Cox said, there are lots of opportunities to get involved, and I think in the next probably decade, we're going to see at least a transformation. a transformation on the south side of Tallahassee. And the other thing I wanted to mention, the Community Lift Institute is having their Tallahassee Kickoff Breakfast tomorrow morning, Friday morning, I'm sorry, Friday morning at the TCC Center for Innovation Downtown, and that's primarily an opportunity for African-American-owned construction and, gosh, I'm blocking on the word I'm looking for, that work for the contractors?
Subs.
Subs, thank you, thank you, subs. To get together, they, they're bringing a young man, F.A. Johnson II, who's an attorney and happens to be a frat brother of mine, Commissioner Williams Cox, he will be the keynote speaker and will be talking about how these businesses can be involved in development throughout the community. And so, again, that's gonna be Friday morning, starting at 8:00 a.m., and there's also gonna be a South Side Tour of Homes, which we're excited about, Mr. Mayor, and there will be presentations, I think there's 10 sites along the Tour of Homes, and four of those, there will be discussions about issues impacting housing and neighborhoods on the south side of town. I think it's gonna be a great, Christine Henry and her husband Carlos are organizers in that, and they, they are partnering with Tallahassee Community College in that effort, so we're looking forward to it.
Excellent. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I only have one item, and I, I think you framed it just on the annexation issue, you know, certainly if you're within the capital circle, you know, I, I consider you, consider you part of Tallahassee whether we officially represent you or not, so my question would just be, Mr. City Manager, if you could just send to our office this kind of the history of annexation, and Madam Attorney, what the processes would be for voluntary annexation or by referendum, or what options are available?
Mr. Manager?
Commissioner, let me, you're asking for some future update, a written update?
Yeah, just, just that, not to be brought back to the commission at this point, but just for, for information.
Oh, certainly, yes, sir.
Excellent. Commissioner Porter, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I was gonna bring that up, so I'm glad that, that you brought that up, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything else right now, I would just like to reserve the right, you know, usually in the sharing of ideas, sometimes I'm responding to the comments that are made on some of the other items, you know, if there's gonna be a quick time for that, I'd appreciate it, but nothing for me right now.
Now's the time to do it, we're doing sharing of ideas, we're not gonna do another round of sharing ideas at the end, that's, you good?
I'm just saying, there's a lot of things that are gonna come up in this meeting, we've only come through half of the meeting, so I might have something else I'd like to say, based on, you know, people are gonna speak on unadmitted items, I'd like the opportunity to address their, to address them.
Oh, of course, we will definitely obviously have public speakers, the public hearing, yeah, yeah, that, we're good.
Okay, thank you.
We're definitely good on that. Okay, so I have two things that, actually one thing, and it deals with collegiate sports. So we've had the FSU Women's Softball Team play for a national championship, okay? We have had the FSU Women's Soccer Team that played for a national championship, and we're very proud of them. I, I don't know what it looks like, but we have to recognize them, I think. So what I'd like to do is simply informally ask the city manager to, to work with the athletic director, do we bring in the coach for a recognition, do we bring in a couple of players, but I do think that we should do something.
Oh, yeah.
On top of that, we never properly recognized the FAMU Football Team for an undefeated home season, and then we had COVID and they didn't play last year, and I do think it would be a great idea to kick off football season by formally recognizing the FAMU Football Team for their undefeated home season, get everybody jazzed up, moving into football season, so I just kinda wanna, there's no formal motion, but think about that, as we're going into the summer, how do we recognize the, the two women's sports programs that did so well, and also, am interested in hearing in the future how we can recognize to kick off the next football season with the FAMU Football Team. And, and, and by the way, if I'm missing any other sports program, because we've done very well across the board, please, we need to make sure that everyone is properly recognized without leaving anybody out. Commissioner Williams Cox, you had a comment?
In that same vein, when Capitol Park comes back from Mississippi?
Of course.
We want to recognize Capitol Park.
Of course, of course, of course. Anyway, that's all I have. Folks, it's 4:17, we stand adjourned, we will be back at 5 o'clock for the publicly noticed public hearing. It is time to begin the advertised public hearing. If I can have everybody come to order. Alright, we have six items on the public hearing tonight, we're on 15.01, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, item number 15.01 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 21-0-15, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida entitled "The Neighborhood Compatibility Ordinance," amending Section 7-72 of the Land Development Code concerning signs on local roads, amending Chapter 10 of the Land Development Code concerning development regulations for commercial and multifamily developments within proximity to residential properties, provided for conflicts, provided for separability, and provided an effective date. Recommended action is Option 1, conduct the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 21-0-15, which adds neighborhood compatibility development standards to the zoning code and adopt the ordinance.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Clark, do we have any speakers on this item?
Yes, sir, we do, on item 1501, we start with Kari Litherland, and she'll be followed by Stanley Sims.
Excellent, Ms. Litherland, thanks for sticking around, joining us again, your name and address for the record, please.
Thanks, I've dropped the daughter off at Dance now, so it's just me. Again, good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, my name is Kari Litherland, and my address is 1336 Jackson Street, 32303, and to, and again, I'm here as the Chair of the Alliance of Tallahassee Neighborhoods, or more commonly referred to as ATN, speaking on the Neighborhood Compatibility Ordinance. As I said earlier today, we use our combined knowledge, expertise and energy, ATN builds consensus on critical issues and takes constructive action. Again, we believe that citizen participation in city development processes is vital to a successful future for all of Tallahassee. We're very excited that this is number two tonight, that we're up here, very proud of. This one has also been years in the making, and we're very excited, again, like it's in front of you today, over two years ago, ATN members Wendy Gray, Mario Taylor, previous Chair Mike Brazin, Commissioner Debbie Lightsey and Kathy McGuire began thinking about this and pushing it with staff, and we are glad to see that it is finally flying in for its landing today. ATN member neighborhoods have often seen issues where new development that is next to residential neighborhoods were not compatible with the existing residential homes and neighborhoods, which causes a whole host of issues. Through extensive research and many meetings discussing each issue at length, we believe we have found great solutions to tackle some of these issues. We want to thank Bill Pavle and Karen for, in particular, for taking our many calls and our comments, and not only listening to our concerns, but proposing solutions to address them while also being very open to hearing the experts that we have on our team and being willing to implement their proposed solutions as well. We have no doubt that this ordinance will have positive impacts, not just for our member neighborhoods, but for all neighborhoods feeling the impact of increased development and urban infill and growth. Again, a huge thank you to our ATN team who have dedicated so much time, volunteering their time to make sure that Tallahassee is as best as it can be and improving the quality of life for many in our community, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, our next speaker, please.
Next speaker Stanley Sims, and then we'll hear from Richard Derobbe.
Excellent, your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I'm at 603 Martin Luther King Boulevard down in the beautiful French Town community. I'm so excited to see this, and let me confess, Commissioner Porter and Commissioner Madlow, I have not even read this, I went over and talked to Ms. Mina, and asked her to give me a brief update, and what she told me, Mr. Mayor, I'm excited to see because this is the very same thing that I showed Commissioner Porter and Commissioner Jeremy down in that French Town quarter. Only thing that, and I don't like, Ms. Jeremy, to be talking on an issue I haven't read, but I just would like for this also to include local government, because I pointed out to, you know, Ms. Porter, when they built the standard, in the Bible, the preacher used to always say, "You got to live in the world, but you don't have to be of the world." And what these developers are doing is, they are putting housing in our community, but they are not a part of our community. If you look at the standard, Mayor, there are no, there are not multiple exits to the main street. The main exit goes to the garage and the windows around, so when we put, when we move them people out the bottom floor of the Renaissance building and put a grocery store there, all them students gonna have to walk all the way back around to come to the grocery store. Those are the kind of things, and not only the standard, the Renaissance building is built like that. So if we go place that standard for our developers, let's place that standard also on local government that comes in. And another reason I love this, because it makes it a little more difficult for gentrification and the losing the culture of, of these communities that are fastly fading away. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clark.
Richard Derobbe, he'll be followed by Karen Gunter.
Mr. Derobbe, good to see you, your name and address for the record, please.
Richard Derobbe, 805 North Gadsden Street, I work with Moor Bass Consulting, I'm here on behalf of the Greater Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce representing the business community. We were engaged on this issue and would like to parrot a lot of the compliments by the ATN representative earlier, just tremendous job by staff, Karen Drummondville, Bill Pavle, other members from Planning Department, John Reddick, all did a great job to bring this thing home. Getting consensus from groups on opposite sides of issues can be obviously very difficult, as you all know, 34 of 35 issues were agreed upon for this ordinance in front of you today, so want to compliment all of them. Also want to speak, after hitting all the positives, a little bit on that 35th, I did this at the intro at the last meeting as well, but just want to be completely upfront and open about that 35th item, it was the Good Neighbor Meeting that got removed, and we think it was removed for good reasons, there, it's a, it would have been a redundant process, it would have caused additional costs for developers unneeded, and there is tremendous outreach already being done by the city for any proposed development, so that's a compliment to you all, the policies you've set and the, the hard work by staff, but between the email blasts, the published agendas, the GIS tools, the fact that notification radius has been doubled, that exceeds the standard for other communities of our kind, we feel that development is obviously in the news, people know what's going on, we can always do better, but that Good Neighbor Meeting wasn't necessarily the way to get there in an efficient manner, so I'm available here as this goes into discussion, if the Good Neighbor Meeting comes up, and if anyone has any technical questions or anything that went into some of the discussions on behalf of the business community, I'd be happy to offer those, I just wanted to throw that out, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, our next speaker, please.
Karen Gunter, and that will be the last speaker on this particular item for public hearing.
Thank you. Okay, no more speakers, we'll turn it over for Commission discussion, comments, direction.
Move staff recommendation on option number one.
Staff recommendation for option number one has been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, I want to lean in and say, Karen, Bill, wonderful job, thank you very much, I mean, you brought the business community, the neighborhoods together, 34 out of 35, that's good, really do appreciate the hard work and dedication. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, I just have a quick question for Mr. Derobbe about the, the Good Neighbor Meeting, or, I was just curious, I mean, I'm sure you have thought about this, but to me, it seems like, you know, the redundancy or the cost, so often when the neighborhood, you know, sometimes it takes many weeks for it to sort of enter the ecosystem of the neighborhood, for them to realize something is happening, even if there have been those notifications, have you considered whether that meeting will save developers' money in the long term? Because what, as you know, happens is people then do hear about it, and they show up, and then we're pressured to, to give more time, I mean, did you consider, what, what do you think about that?
Absolutely, so I, I think that's a great point you're making, and we were thinking along those same lines, so in the form it was presented, it was a very regimented process that required a certain number of days prior to even a pre-submital, and then you had to wait a certain number of days after the Good Neighbor Meeting before you could actually make an application, so it was extending a timeline, where time is money in the development world, obviously, so that, and then there was other direct notice fees, hosting the meeting, all the costs associated with the meeting that were gonna play into it, so we thought in the form it was created, it, it wasn't quite baked, and it wasn't as efficient as it would, would have been intended. The other thing I'll mention is that we suggest, and we'd be open to, I think, supporting perhaps in the future, because I understand growth management's working on a glitch bill that may satisfy some issues going on with the code, but there could be a component of a site plan application or any development application that would mirror what happens with the planning department when you're doing a PED rezoning, where it asks you, have you engaged your neighbors? And it's not a requirement, but it's a yes/no checkbox, and if, if you say yes, you say when you did it, what groups you engaged, and it really helps you get through the planning department review of your rezoning or your comp plan change, so I think something like that could be baked into the site plan application, and it may not be a requirement, but it would definitely help the reviewers know that you've engaged, and I think it would give you all and everyone in, with city staff, they would know that the neighborhoods have been engaged on the issues coming up. The other thing I'll mention briefly is that the site plan processes are built in a way that I think identify, and they, they publish these agendas, if you are within the confines of your zoning district, you're going through a Type A review, you submit an application, one week later you have a review, that's a public meeting, the public can come, they can make comments, the only time you have to go into direct notice mailers is when you are deviating from the zoning code, you go to a Type B review, there's a one-month process from the application, at least four to five weeks sometimes, before you go to the DRC meeting, so I think the processes are there for engagement, and I think those neighbor meetings, the neighborhoods are engaged, and I think we take feedback from those on the projects we represent, can't speak for other land development consultants in the industry.
Thank you, that was really helpful, thank you.
Wow, great answer, thank you. Seeing no further comment, motion for staff recommendation has been made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. Number 15.02, Madam Attorney?
Thank you, item number 15.02, first and only public hearing on ordinance number 21-0-18, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida amending Section 6 of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee to annex within the corporate area of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, upon adoption of said ordinance, property situated in Leon County, Florida, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, provided for separability, conflicts and an effective date. Recommended action is Option 1, conduct the first and only public hearing and approve ordinance number 21-0-18. Oxery Gates LLC is the owner of the two parcels located at 5701 Thomasville Road and has submitted a petition for annexation to the City of Tallahassee.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, any speakers on this item?
No speakers on this item.
Let's open it up for comment, direction.
Move option one, staff recommendation on option number one.
Staff recommendation's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Porter, no further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. We are on item number 15.03, Madam Attorney?
Item number 15.03 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 21-0-22aa, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida creating Section 21-244, City of Tallahassee Code relating to setting of rates for use by the public of certain electric vehicle charging stations owned and operated by the city, provided for conflicts, provided for separability and provided an effective date. Recommended action is Option 1, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 21-0-22aa. Following introduction, the ordinance was revised to add a review and reaffirmation requirement, which is described in paragraph 11 of the agenda item and is set forth in Section 21-244C of the code.
Excellent. Mr. Clark, do we have any speakers on this item?
We have one speaker on this item, Mayor Shelby Green.
Ms. Green, thanks for sticking around and joining us again, we appreciate it, your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Board, my name is Shelby Green and my address is 519 Ingleside Avenue, I'm pulling up my notes yet again. Okay, so I'm here to talk about the, the rates, so what we would like to do is encourage people to use electric vehicles, but I do think that the rates are way too high, the national and the state, sorry, the city would like, yeah, so the city is proposing a rate of 30 cents per kilowatt hour, in comparison, that's three times higher than the state and the national. In comparison, that's three times higher than the state and the national commercial average. In addition, this is also the highest charging rate in Tallahassee. The second highest is twenty-eight cents a kilowatt hour, and that's for Tesla superchargers in a commercial shopping complex. These chargers will be placed across the city. And not only will it include that base rate of thirty cents per kilowatt hour, it also includes potentially idle charges if people plan on sitting in their vehicle. And it also charges people to pay if they're at metered parking or parking in parking garages. In addition, the county put in electric vehicle charging stations at no cost to the public. And I'm just wondering, how is this cost justified? If we want people to be more sustainable, we need to give them financial incentives. And if the city is charging a lot more than the market rate, and people can just use the county or the current market rate options, I do think that sixteen charging stations will be sitting empty. In addition, there was no, the number that was used to justify this cost of thirty cents per kilowatt hour is from FPL, and that is an IOU. I would like to see numbers from public utilities. That makes more sense using numbers from public utilities than from investor-owned utilities, because they have different financial incentives. The last thing I will say is, if the cost remains, I do think that maybe fifty percent of it can be used to fund project share or neighborhood reach or other energy efficiency programs. New research from FSU and the city's very own Michael Olson proves low-income and black communities pay twenty-five to sixty percent higher on their utility bill than non-minority neighborhoods. If we would like to address this inequity, I think this fund may be an option.
You have about twenty seconds.
Okay. And then over sixty percent of the people behind on their current utility bill live in black communities. So I'm asking the Board to justify this cost. And if it remains, then please use some of these funds to fund energy efficiency programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manjor for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got David Byrne with us on WebEx, and he's one of our experts. But I think I can probably address the comments. This is an emerging business. This is one that you authorized us to get into as an expansion of our electric utility to provide a broader network for electric car charging. The chargers that are in motion will take the form of faster chargers. You do find some areas where there's some slower chargers. They would take many, many hours. They don't produce much electricity. But the idea is that you begin to replicate something that would be much like a modern-day gas station, and that's what these will do. There's very little information about how much the cost is, but we did scan the market. The proposed rate of thirty cents a kilowatt hour is on the low end of that market. It was validated by Florida Power and Light. The comfort that we get in that is it was approved by the Florida Public Service Commission. And so they have to base that on the best information available. What we don't know is the capacity factor for which these facilities will be used. That will be developed. That's part of this exercise. We have proposed the ordinance so that it can be adjusted. So as we get experience of how we use it and how people use it, so we get a better handle on cost, then we would adjust those fees. Keep in mind that the rate that Ms. Green talked about in terms of the electricity rate, that's the input. That's the raw product, if you will. It obviously has to be made available to charge at a rapid pace. And so there's an equipment charge, there's a facility charge, and that all goes into it. And there's a demand factor for these facilities. We do have quite a bit of experience related to our electric bus program, which was one of the very first in the nation. The dynamics related to charging of electric vehicles is completely different than that of a building. Buildings tend to use electricity more steady-state. That lowers the average cost per kilowatt hour. When you're in a rapid charge situation, it requires a surge of electricity. It requires more transformation capacity, and that cost per kilowatt hour is naturally higher. So we know that from experience, because, for example, Star Metro pays an electric bill to charge electric buses. So we kind of have a feel for that. It is not equivalent to the cost of providing electricity to a building. So staff has, again, scanned the market. They've looked at what others are doing. There are not other municipal utilities in this space. Maybe there are, they're few and far between. If they are, I'm not sure they're known to us. We are way ahead of this market. We think that it will encourage the use of electric vehicles in our community, more access to charging, and in particular, more access to fast charging. You'll recall, our first entrance into this will be with charging stations at the new parking garage at Cascades Park. But soon behind that, and as fast as we can move, we're talking about standalone charging stations that kind of resemble, again, a modern-day gas station, less the convenience store. These will have the very fastest chargers commercially available, faster than anything that we've seen. And they will be future-proof to some degree as charging capacity and speed increases, which we believe will happen. While not commercially available, there are numerous studies and pilots that are in motion around the world to increase the speed in which you can fully charge a car. And so it becomes time-equivalent to more what we experience today in gasoline. And we believe if we lean in with this program at a rate that's not unreasonable, at a rate that we believe will cover costs, we will have to determine that. It is not designed as an excessive profit line of business. That's not the intent here, and I'm certain it will not recover as much. But we'll learn from experience, and we'll set the rate the very best we can to encourage more electric cars in our community. And so that's kind of the background context. David can go deeper than me, but I think that generally addresses the question of the rate. There was a question I wouldn't like to answer, and this came up from our team, and they're very wisely. We don't want somebody to sit at the gas pump, if you will. Once you're done refueling the vehicle, we want you to move your vehicle so someone else can come in and refuel it. And you certainly have that potential, especially in parking-type situations, where you might just otherwise park there for an extended period of time, less about the charging, more about the parking. So we want to send that price signal. When you're here, when you're engaged in the charging, that's when we want you to be here, not for next hours and hours of time. And maybe it take you twenty minutes to charge the car, but don't stay there for four hours with no payment. So there's a price signal built in to encourage that.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments on this agenda item, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay. Let's open it up for direction and for comment. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, again, this is an instance where the City of Tallahassee is out front and a leader in addressing climate change in our community, in our state, and in our world. We, this is another example of how we're moving forward to meet that 2050 goal, and hopefully even before, but at least meet that 2050 goal of becoming carbon neutral. And I say we move forward with it. It's new. It's not being done anywhere else that we know of using a municipal utility. And so I think it's something that we need to be proud of, again, demonstrating the leadership that this commission and staff have shown in this area. And so I would move that we accept the staff recommendation on option number one, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Richardson has properly moved option number one. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Any further discussion, Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick question. Can someone remind me the process for making a change to this rate?
Mr. Manjor.
So what we have in the-
Excuse me, Madam Attorney.
What we have in the ordinance is the opportunity for review of the methodology. And so not less than three, but more than six years, it will come back before you, for you to have a full look at what has been going on since the time of adoption.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Porter, you have the floor.
That's all for me. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Protim.
That was my question.
Excellent. Seeing no further questions. All those in favor of the item, as probably moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox for the staff recommendation. Do signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five-zero. We are on item number fifteen point oh-four, Mr. Sutton.
Actually, it's first to the attorney.
I'm sorry.
So item number fifteen point zero-four is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number twenty-one dash O dash twenty-three, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending section two dash seventy-five of the Code of General Ordinances regarding certification of Inspector General, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and provided an effective date. Recommended action is option one and two. Conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number twenty-one dash O dash twenty-three and approve a one-year extension for good cause to obtain the Inspector General certification should the ordinance pass.
All right, Ms. Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
I have one speaker, Stanley Sims.
All right. Any further comment? All right.
Option one.
Mayor Protim has properly moved, do you want just option one or option one and option two as recommended by staff?
And option two.
Okay. Mayor Protim has properly moved the staff recommendation of option one and option two. Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five-zero. Item number fifteen point oh-five, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number fifteen point zero-five is the second and final public hearing on ordinance number twenty-one dash Z dash thirteen, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designated and including additional territory for property located in Griffin Heights and Bond Neighborhoods as an in Neighborhood Boundary One from Residential Preservation Two on the official zoning map. Providing for conflicts and severability and provided an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the second and final public hearing and adopt ordinance number twenty-one dash Z dash thirteen based on the findings and conclusions of the Planning Commission and evidence presented at these public hearings.
All right, Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do. Mayor, Stanley Sims.
Mr. Sims, welcome back. Your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Mayor, with this, I'm sorry, six-oh-three Martin Luther King, preservation down in the Frenchtown community, and based on what I've been saying, this is bittersweet. There's a good side to this, and then there's a bad side to this. One is, I think that's driving this, and one that pushes me to support this is because of my perception of the fast-moving and development of gentrification that's going on in these areas. And that does slow it down. Based on what I've been talking to different ones, yeah, it slows it down, but then there's some issues once this designation is in place. But as I've looked at it, I think it gonna do more good than it would do any bad. And so, and I say that in the lens of that, when I see the warp speed of developers coming into the Frenchtown area, when I see the warp speed of the real estate price increases down there, where before covert, these homes was thirty and forty thousand dollars. Now they're eighty and ninety, a hundred and ten, a hundred and forty. So I, and there's some arguments on both sides. And so being down in the Frenchtown area, and I'm very concerned about the Frenchtown area, because we getting a lot of attention, but I'm not pleased with some of the attention that we are getting and some of the actions that are being going down in the Frenchtown. And another thing that I'm really not happy about is I think that sometimes, and I've been guilty of it. I've drove through there so many times, I think I know it. But it was actually, I stopped one day and walked that neighborhood, and that's when I discovered a lot of these issues. And so with all of this money that's pouring into Frenchtown, and we thank you, commissioners. We thank you that you've heard our cry. We thank you that you're trying to do something about it. But we also, I want to go one step further and say, let's not rely on your memory. Let's come down there and see how this works. I'm excited about this neighborhood capacity program. There's a lot of stuff good that's gonna happen, but I'm asking you to designate some of your time so that we can show you through our eyes of how some of the great things that you alls are doing that we can direct it there.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Do we have any other speakers on this item?
We have no other speakers on fifteen oh-five.
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
We have no other speakers on this item.
All right, let's open it up for discussion and comment.
Move staff recommendation on option number one.
Commissioner Richardson properly moves the staff recommendation on option number one. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Is there any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five-zero. Item number fifteen point oh-six, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number fifteen point zero-six is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number twenty-one dash Z dash nineteen, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, removing a structure in the All Saints Neighborhood from the local register of historic places, rezoning a property in the All Saints Neighborhood to remove an historic preservation overlay, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and provided an effective date. The recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number twenty-one dash Z dash nineteen, thereby removing the subject property from the local register of historic places and amending the official zoning map to change the zoning classification from the All Saints Neighborhood A zoning district with historic preservation overlay to the All Saints Neighborhood A zoning district based on the findings and conclusions of the Planning Commission, the information set forth in this agenda item, and any evidence submitted at this hearing.
Excellent. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do, Mayor. The first speaker on this item is Kirsten Olson, and then Gary Ricklick.
All right. So Olson, thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Kirsten Olson. I'm at twelve-twenty-five Taubett Avenue, which is in Bran Hills. But first of all, thank you for all the work you do for the city. All Saints Neighborhood is kind of near and dear to my heart, because my son was at the Gwynn Cherry Child Development Center that was right behind the Department of Education that many of you all probably know about. And he learned to walk in that neighborhood. I would take him out after I picked him up, and we just would walk around there. So I was particularly interested in this item. And that area had a lot of charm. It has a lot of charm. But now there's only about six historic properties left there. My understanding is with this particular property that the plan is for that one and one right behind it, that the whole, that they'll be torn down and the block will be redeveloped. And I think that's just sad, that this was a revitalization area, and now these are just the few that we have left. And I think they have a lot of charm, and they add a lot to the City of Tallahassee. I feel like sometimes with our policies, it's easy to strip away, one by one, the character, especially in the downtown neighborhoods. So I would like to ask you to look at readdressing the code, especially in older in-town neighborhoods like this one, to preserve character rather than destroying the charm. I would also suggest that maybe we could take a look at the All Saints Revitalization Plan and see what could have been improved so that we have more, a really nice, great mix, which I think was envisioned, of old and new. And, you know, just ultimately, Tallahassee is really blessed with many historic structures, gorgeous trees, and a lot of charm. So I'd like to see if there's a way we can preserve and enhance our in-town communities for our long-term success. Thank you for everything you do for the city.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker, please.
Next speaker, Gary Ricklick, and then Delatory Hollinger.
Thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record.
My name is Casey Ricklick. I live at six-one-three Dent Street. I apologize for my bad handwriting. It's Casey.
Not your fault, mine. Thank you, though.
So I'm the owner of eight-two-two South MLK. I purchased the property and placed it on the local historic register in 2010. A year ago to the day, I emailed Dr. Melissa Stoller, Uh, a year ago to the day, I emailed Dr. Melissa Stoller, the local historic trust officer, to initiate removal of the HPO from my property, um, please to finally come in front of the commission and ask that you pass staff recommendations and grant the petition. Uh, Tallahassee Land Development Code fails to provide a delisting procedure. Uh, the gap created an arduous process, both for myself and for city staff. I'd like to thank Dr. Stoller and Shannon Kutch with the Tallahassee Historic Trust, Kelly Scott and Lou Norville in the City Attorney's Office, and Susan Popple and Russell Snyder with Planning. Everyone's efforts collectively helped provide me with due process where there was no process before, so, thank you. Criticism on social media that the ARB simply rubber-stamped my petition as inaccurate. The ARB spent a lot of time and spirited debate over this item. There have been four public hearings addressing my petition to date, and scrutiny has been extensive. It is crucial to highlight that while eight-two-two South MLK is old and charming, it is not historic. It is a bicenturian vernacular Frankenstein of a structure. Its nineteenth-century historic integrity was diminished by major alterations in the nineteen forties. They created long-term maintenance issues. Decades of neglect and water damage exacerbated this. More recently, development trends in All Saints, including the demolition of the Saul signs building at eight-sixteen South MLK, eviscerated integrity of setting. The prospect of old and funky as a prevailing feature on the block is gone. Furthermore, recent sales rendered the entire block, aside from my parcel, and the ownership of developers. Over the past decade, I put countless hours of sweat equity and a ton of borrowed money into this home. Only those who've rehab, only those who have rehabbed old structures themselves understand the love and energy required to bring a dying and neglected building back to life. From late nights in the attic catching rainwater in buckets to hot summer days crawling underneath to find water leaks or shore up wood rot, I've busted my tail on that house, so I don't take the decision to remove the petition, or to petition for removal of the HPO lightly. Several people have inquired about what I intend to do with the property. That question does not germane to the analysis of the property's historic status, but I will say, I, I'm not, honestly not sure. I've not committed to sell, and I will not redevelop it myself. I have neither the resources nor the desire. That being said, I'm also not interested in maintaining the property in perpetuity on an island of what All Saints should have or could have been.
About fifteen seconds remaining.
Okay, yeah, uh, I don't wanna end up on an island, surrounded on all sides by high-density development. Uh, that's not what I signed on for when I consented to placement of the HPO many years ago. Uh, I again ask commissioners to move forward with the petition to remove HPO. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next speaker is Delatory Hollinger. He's the last speaker we have in person. We do have one on WebEx that we'll go to after Mr. Hollinger.
Excellent. Mr. Hollinger, thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Delatory Hollinger, five-one-one Alpha Avenue. For this particular item, I'd like to say I respect the owner of the property and certainly respect the, uh, the rights of any owner to do as they wish with their property, but I think that approving this on today sets, sets a dangerous precedent, um, for the many properties that we have on the local register of historic places, and I'd like for you to consider strongly voting against this measure. And if we, uh, are to continue to demolish, uh, to, uh, irreparably alter the historic character of neighborhoods, um, if we're going to continue to do that, that we amend our historic preservation ordinance to provide for some type of digitization, um, that we utilize the technology, um, that is at our fingertips now, um, in this day and time to, uh, require that a property owner, uh, or that the city provide resources for a property owner to go in and digitally record, uh, the property. There are many, uh, ways that we can do that, um, but there, there has to be a better way for us to, uh, preserve our history, and if, and if we're gonna continue to demolish it, I think that we need to find other more innovative ways to, uh, to, to preserve that history. So, um, if, so I'd like to ask for you to vote against this, but to also consider amending the ordinance to create a committee or council, um, that review properties that are currently on the register, properties that are not on the register but could be eligible, um, that we find another way to preserve that and that we also find a way to preserve, um, what once was, um, in these areas and in these neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Our next speaker is Max Epstein.
Mr. Epstein, thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. It's Max Epstein, one thousand one San Luis Road. Uh, first of all, I wanna thank Casey because he is one of the actual few developers, maybe the only one in town who cares about historic preservation. I think it's because of him that we have any examples of the Stearns Mosley neighborhood left, and I know that he tried to move at least one home that he owned in, uh, still quarters on Fam U.A. before it was knocked down. But along with Delatory's comments, I don't think this sets a good precedent, and we need to look as a city to preserve the character and these historic structures for many years to come. And how can we incentivize that? Um, you know, Casey came onto our Facebook group. We had ninety-one comments on this. Um, I'm pretty sure many of us would have showed up to the ARB meetings and others had we, you know, kept up with this. Uh, and, you know, there's another historic building that's going, um, up for permit for demolition just down the street, another eighteen-hundreds home that, yes, has been modified over the years. Um, but this is a difference basically, according to Casey, of a hundred thousand dollars. That's the value, a hundred and fifty potentially, that would be lost out. So can we come up with a way to cover this gap? Can the city look at becoming the steward of this home to keep it funky? And I have to tell you, I think a lot of our trees, a lot of our structures, they're disappearing unnecessarily, and a lot of this does have to do with the permitting. This has to do with the zoning and the planning because there's no reason why we couldn't have had the new and the old in All Saints. That's what makes this place special, and we're losing that. Places like Thomasville have the Big Oak or an actual historic downtown where they preserve things, and that brings in money, tourism money. And there's plenty of room in All Saints, empty lots further down near the train tracks that are primed for redevelopment that wouldn't have to mess with these historic properties. So I hope that you, um, say no to this and then reach out to see if there is a way to work with the owner to preserve this home. We need to keep our sense of place here in Tallahassee, and it is escaping. Um, I, again, we've had so many historic properties, so many historic homes and trees bulldozed just in the last five years for no reason. We can be developing and doing all these things together, so I do hope, um, that you vote no. If you don't, oh, let's figure out how we address this going forward. So there aren't people coming to you every meeting wanting you just to say the few things that are important to the history of Tallahassee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
That is the last speaker we have on this item.
All right. Mr. Baner, will you walk us through this process of the role on the same page?
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I get a point of clarification?
Of course. Commissioner Williams Cox.
Um, the owner has asked for this.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And it's private property, right?
Mm-hmm.
And I didn't hear the owner say that he was gonna demolish it, and so whatever he decides to do with it, it's his private property, right? I'm just, I'm trying to make this work in my mind. Um, so what are we, what are we doing? If the owner asks that this designation be removed, just like the owner probably asked that it be applied, the owner is now saying, remove it because he's not gonna move forward with whatever he had planned to do originally, then why are we just not honoring what the owner has requested?
And we'll come back to you in just a second. Uh, Shari, will you bring us up to speed on the pro, when we're dealing with the historic properties in these particular situations, what is the process?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, and Shari can walk through the process, 'cause obviously it's a, um, detailed process, and Mr. Reitzek talked about that. It has been through a lot of steps. That's requisite, and Shari can help guide that from our planning department. We also have Melissa Stoller, the executive director of, uh, Tallahassee Historic Trust, and, and she's been involved as well. So there's a lot of, lot of elements to this when you get involved in the historic preservation. So if Shari can walk us through the process, and then I know we have other resources that we need in.
And I'll just speak-
And then Commissioner Williams Cox, I'll come back to you after.
I'll speak basically to the steps of, of how this occurred, and it's similar to doing it in reverse to putting it on the, um, register, but it, that, his request was made to the Architectural Review Board, and ultimately, um, that was evaluated by, um, Melissa with the Tallahassee Trust and the Architectural Review Board, and they made a recommendation to, uh, remove it, and where it moves from there is treated, um, just like a rezoning. So from that Architectural Review Board recommendation, uh, we take it to the planning, then picks it up and carries it to the Planning Commission that, um, also recommended approval, and then we come to, to this body, um, with the introduction and the public hearing process, which brings us today. And Melissa is, um, actually here to, if, if there's specific questions as far as the deliberation.
What was the recommendation of Architectural Review Board?
To, to remove it.
What was the recommendation of the trust?
Uh, well, that's the same, but to remove it.
Excuse me. And the recommendation of the Planning Commission?
It was also some-
Thank you. Coming back to Commissioner Williams Cox.
So what are we doing? Um, I, I guess that's, that's, that's what my question boils down to. I understand that there are individuals who are saying to, um, the owner, are saying to us not to approve this, but if the owner asked that it be applied, and it was, and now the owner is saying, remove it, then, uh, I'm ready to support the owner.
So I'd like to make a motion.
So move.
Second.
And I'm, the motion is for the recommended action of option number one, which is to adopt the ordinance to remove the subject property from the local registry of historic places.
That's it.
Okay. Coming to you in just a second, Commissioner Porter. So a motion's been made for staff recommendation by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Porter, you have the floor.
Thank you. I know, Commissioner Williams Cox, your question was not addressed to me, but my understanding is it's not so simple because the, the right was in some way given over to the public interest, which is why it's before us, um, because there is a vested interest in the sense of place and our historic preservation, which is why we go through this process. I have a couple of questions. One is, have we ever done this before?
Not to my memory and, and not to the records that we've found.
Okay. Um, thank you. I do think, and I have some other comments and questions, I do think that we may want to consider our own process for, um, you know, deregistering, since this is probably not the last time it's gonna happen, and it's important that we do this in a consistent manner. Um, you know, I cannot support this as much as I would like to see it as simply as, I've only heard good things about you, Casey. I, I, I want it to be, I think we need to do a lot more to preserve our, our historic structures, to support those who take it upon themselves to do the work and, and invest in those structures. What I see in this, though, when we're looking at the, the national criteria, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I see two things. One is if the, and, you know, I, I understand there are other experts in the room, um, is whether the structure was damaged so mu, you know, like a hurricane comes through and it's just no longer historic, and then second, if it should never have been on the registry in the first place. What is not on there is if it's difficult to sell the home or these other considerations. What's also not on there is the, the character of the area. I mean, and I understand you're the expert, I'm not trying to push back against that, but in my, I mean, all historic structures, most are, you know, the, we got an email, the old historic capital now is surrounded by condos and things that were not there when it was constructed. Um, and I do think I have, I hear a lot from constituents about their priority and my priority in maintaining the character of our neighborhood, and I don't wanna make it sound like it all comes down to this one decision, but I definitely wanna make sure that we take this very seriously moving forward on this issue and others. Um, when I think about, and I make this point a lot, the best places to visit in the world, the best places people wanna see, there are places that have this character and this sense of history. That is the place-making and the sense of self. I, I also have one more question. I know I've said a lot about the timeline. So in September, the, the Architectural Review Board originally recommended that it not be rezoned and removed from the local register of historic places, and then earlier this year, the Planning Commission upheld that, that recommendation, that it not be removed. Um, and then the, the applicant withdrew the rezoning request. Can someone explain what happened there? I see that then, um, a new application was submitted, which, which included significant detail on the character of the area and the condition of the subject property. So I'm just wondering what changed, 'cause we went from rejection by both boards that we've referenced to then some things changed, and then we, we see obviously the acceptance, which is why we're considering it today.
And, um, a big part of that is the fact that there wasn't a clearly defined process, and so then going back and working with staff and with the legal, you know, legal, um, um, advice from the City Attorney's Office of, of going back and, and, uh, working through that, um, and, and so that was the reflection of that process, basically, uh, at, at that higher level. Does that answer your question?
I can probably speak to that somewhat. So my understanding is in that intervening time, there was some information that was found in the state records that reflected that the property did not, uh, reflect this har, uh, historic value. And so the, the applicant was given the option to withdraw the application if the, if the applicant could desire, and this was primarily, of course, due to the fact that we did not have that established process that we would like to have. So we gave the applicant, applicant the opportunity to withdraw. He withdrew. It went back through, and then some of this information came out at the ARB level. Um, and they did, in fact, apply the criteria in our city, our city code. They just applied it in a reverse way. So that gave the applicant the opportunity, and also I wanted to state for you that we, we are in the, in the process now of developing, uh, a, an ordinance, a proposed ordinance for your consideration, which will go through a process before the ARB where we can have this kind of process so that it wouldn't be, uh, applied in this way in the, in the future, but there would be an established ordinance where you'd have criteria similar as to what you talked, you spoke of at the national level, where it can be properly reviewed and come before this commission and the ARB.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all for me.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, first off, I, I just have tremendous respect for anybody who purchases, uh, a property with the intention to preserve its historic, um, character. Um, and, you know, this is a, a challenging decision for, for many different reasons. When, when I look at the decision to list a property on a local historic register is a lifelong decision. So as far as hopping on and hopping off, that's not a register at all, in my opinion, if the criteria is not strict enough to, once you make that commitment, you're committing to see that property through in its historic form until it transfers, um, ownership. And I, I understand, um, the surrounding properties and neighborhoods not redeveloping in a way that weren't part of the vision, part of, you know, the dream, but, but we're not registering that entire neighborhood. We're speaking to specific individual properties. And when I look at this specific property, I mean, we've all seen people who hold a historic property to the end, and then they have high-rises built around them, and they're that one lot, and it's very inconsistent. But when we look at All Saints, while the new development in All Saints, um, has replaced a lot of historic structures, I don't see this particular prop, property appearing incompatible with its surroundings. It still fits the character, um, of the neighborhood and the location of, of the area. Um, and when we look at All Saints in particular, I'm not ready to give up, uh, the Juannish cigar factory. I'm not ready to give up. I hope somebody will step up for the old Coca-Cola building, and there's numerous properties over there that make that neighborhood unique and special still. And I think back, Mr. Mayor, when we all, I think most of us traveled to Greenville, and one thing I took away from the mayor there was he said, "We made it virtually impossible to tear down a historic structure." And you see that in their downtown, while every stru- And you see that in their downtown, while every structure is not historic, the brand-new structures that they built cohesively intertwine so that history is relinquished, because once it's gone, you never get it back. So when I look at the criteria of the Land Development Code, that was considered setting, fueling, association, I think were the three that were strongly stood out, but the Land Development Code only requires, it really, to me, one. And when I look at the workmanship of the building, when I look at the location of the building, I don't think that this property is past saving. I think if an owner brought this property as it is today and really wanted to get listed, I think it has enough characteristics that we could grant it to be listed. And I really sympathize with the economic position, but I do think while the easiest way to get a return on the investment is from a big developer buying it and developing the whole block, I don't think that rules out the potential for somebody who cares about historic preservation to purchase it and carry the flag. And if the city, local government can find extra renovation funds to offset those types of things, I think we should absolutely look into it. And you know, lastly, on the lack of a removal policy, you know, frankly, everybody has always celebrated the local register because they felt like it was protected more than the national register because of the absence of a stated policy. This is why, this is the first time we've gone through this. So I think when we look at crafting a policy, we need to be looking at a very strict criteria. So when people do list properties, they know what they're getting into and what delisting will look like. And while it's a hard position to tell a private property owner that, no, I don't feel like they should be listed because I think it's still historic and the decision was made to list it as historic. I didn't personally make that decision, but the property owner did, and it puts us in a bind. But considering it still has characteristics that I think meet the criteria to be listed, I'll be voting against the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I just want to weigh in real quick. And first of all, Trudy, thank you very much. Unusual situation. We didn't have a policy in place or a procedure in place, and I think that y'all have done a great job of dotting i's and crossing the t's to make sure that there's due process, but this was fully vetted as well. I want to thank our friends at the trust. Y'all are very much more qualified than I am. This is your profession. You put a lot of time and energy. This is an unusual situation, not an easy decision to make whatsoever, but I do believe in your recommendation, and I do believe that you have given it a good faith effort along with staff and the property owner to make sure that you cover every aspect of this request. It is not one that we take lightly, but I am going to support the motion on the table made by Commissioner Williams-Cox and seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Great. All those in favor of the motion on the table made by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox and seconded by Commissioner Richardson for staff recommendation of option number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Passes three-two with Commissioner Porter and Commissioner Mayor Protim Matlow in dissent. Okay. Is there any other items to come before us during the public hearing, Madam Attorney?
No, Mayor.
Okay. So we are on un-agenda business speakers. Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers this evening?
Yes, sir, we do. The first is Shelley, I'm sorry, Shelby Green, and we do have, I think, eight or nine speakers.
Okay. Ms. Green, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Board. My name is Shelby Green, and my address is 519 Ingleside Avenue. I'm here again to ask the city to pause disconnections and to reinstate the utility moratorium. Since February, I have been canvassing, and while in the Providence neighborhood at an apartment complex, I met a woman, and her name is Ms. Fleming. On May 9th, she received her May utility bill. She owed $570, and it was due by May 26th. And next to it, it said, "Immediate payment of $343.68 is required to avoid interruption of service." Thirty-six days later, or yesterday, she was disconnected. In 2019, I had the same fate. I owed $140 on my utility bill, and I couldn't afford to pay it. I was a college student, and we had just come back from winter break, and I spent all my money. I was being irresponsible. We lost power for two weeks. I had water, but it was cold. I showered at the leech every day, and I stayed on campus until it was time to go home to sleep. I was only ever home to sleep, and I don't remember what I ate or if I ate during that time. Eventually, the lights were turned back on, but I had to open a credit card and put the balance on there. Why I'm asking the city to reinstate the moratorium is because when I was disconnected, on my utility bill, it said, "Payment of $140.13 is required by January 17th, 2017 to avoid interruption of service." Ms. Fleming was disconnected without a disconnection date, and it goes against the caveat that was put into place when the city passed the moratorium. The caveat said, if I can find it, the caveat said, "Customers would receive a 60-day advance notice before being disconnected." Her bill did not have a 60-day advance notice, and so I'd like the city to explain why it is there was no advance notice, why there was not a disconnection date on her bill, why there was no communication of the multitude of debt relief options that we have currently available. We have our Florida at the state level, project share, and the agency's light heat program at the local level. She is without power, and it goes against what was stated and outlined in the policy or the moratorium ending. And in my...
You have 30 seconds.
In my remaining seconds, I would like you all to think about what it would feel like to not have any power, and what it would feel like to do the best that you're doing in a pandemic and not know that there are options on the table and being disconnected without that knowledge. And I would like for you to think Shelby, four years ago, who was a college student, not knowing any of this information and having to take out a credit card and being fiscally irresponsible to pay for this when there's options available. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Carmen Carlson, and then Jeremy Block. Carmen Carlson is next. Then we'll go to Jeremy Block.
Thanks, sir. It's good to see you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Jeremy Block, 1109 East Sixth Avenue. I'm here for a subject that's new to me, but I've been researching it ad nauseam. And Mr. Mayor, I would like to draw on your previous job across the street. Four years ago, we were both in attendance at the first rendition of the Orange Avenue complex being redone. And one of the components of that, that I took away from that session, which was the initial briefing of the county on the criteria and on the phase system and so on and so forth, was that the people were going to be placed in the community for nine or so months, and then they would be allowed to return to the new fancy units with plenty of green grass and plenty of dog parks and plenty of benches. And that comes not to be the case now that we're in the 11th hour and they're fueling the bulldozers, and that is simply not the case according to the Tallahassee Housing Authority. And I have many quotes, and I won't read them at all, I won't read them all, but the deal simply is that because there was money used that was subsidized to finance this phase, we'll just talk about phase one, that was used to finance phase one, the vouchers and the Section 8 information that's being given to the residents, of which there are 55 families that have to move in phase one, that they can come back. But because the units were subsidized under HUD, they're not allowed to accept the vouchers, they're not allowed to accept the Section 8 information, they have to reapply, and it's market value housing with a tax rate. You know, the families, some of them have lived there for 50 years. There are a handful of residents that have lived there all their life. There's another group of residents who are disabled by any criteria, and they are being asked to find a place to live for nine months purportedly until they could move home, which is now turning out not to be the case. And I just found that extraordinary because, like I said, Mr. Mayor, I remember that first presentation at the county, and they were so gracious and they were so accommodating.
You have 15 seconds.
Imagine that. It hasn't proven to be the case. And I'm not sure there's anything that this body can do immediately, but I think it's my obligation to let you know about these changes while we may be able to still act on it. Thank you.
Mr. Block, thank you. And we will definitely follow up with Ms. Williams, who's the executive director of Tallahassee Housing Authority, because it is my understanding, based on the testimony that she gave two meetings ago, that those families that will be moved out for phase one would definitely have first right of refusal to move back in.
Only under the new criteria will they be given first opportunities.
No, sir. The testimony that was given before the city commission at that meeting is that there would be first right of refusal to move back in. But of course, we will follow up because this is a very serious issue. And it's good to see you again.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Sure.
I don't know if each of us received it, but I received an email from Ms. Williams with an extensive outline of relocation and relocation services that will be provided, and the residents will be able to use those Section 8 vouchers for other housing in the community. And you're correct. Since the first time I was informed about this redevelopment, it was indicated, and it's happened in other municipalities, Tampa is one place I can speak to specifically, the residents who were displaced had first right of refusal if they wanted to come back. Many of them didn't. And if they don't, then there's what I, the last I heard, a 1,500-person or family waiting list for those who might not come back, and they will have first priority if those families that use the voucher and move other places. And they can go anywhere in the United States of America they want to and use that voucher. They're not confined to Tallahassee, they're not confined to the state of Florida, and the housing authority will pay for that subsidized rent wherever they decide to use that voucher.
But of course, we will formally follow up one more time with the Housing Authority. Yes, Commissioner Williams-Cox?
To Commissioner Richardson's point, I also received a letter from Ms. Williams, and I'm reading quote from her letter, "Orange Avenue redevelopment timeline. We anticipate demolition to begin in October 2021 and new construction in February 2022. The new apartments will be ready for occupancy by July 2023. All families," and this is bolded, "all families relocated from Orange Avenue apartments will have first rights to return to a new apartment before renting to anyone else." This is what she sent to us in writing in a letter yesterday. So just, I mean, I'm not here to defend or whatever, I'm just reading the letter that was sent to me unsolicited.
Okay. Let's move on to our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next speaker is Carrie Litherland. She would be followed by Karen Gunter, but I believe she may have left, so if she's outside...
Carrie Litherland, thank you for joining us again. Your name and address for the record, please.
Carrie Litherland, 1336 Jackson Street, 32303. So third time, promise it's the last, right? It's my only last. So the very first thing I wanted to talk about was, as using the hat still of Chair of ATN, we just wanted to thank Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox from the last meeting, bringing up the deviations and variance ordinance that we've been working on, and we wanted to follow up with that and some of the comments that were made about the glitch ordinance. The first is that we really want to thank, Bill probably took about 30 minutes today with me and a 30 minutes to an hour earlier Monday to sit down with us and talk to us about everything that's going on, and we're very excited about the updates that we heard. And so we just wanted to share with you that we believe that the variance and deviation ordinance is very separate than the glitch ordinance, is what we were told by staff, and we're excited about that, and that we should have an answer to our issue on the variance and deviation ordinance to move forward by July 1st. The biggest issue that we've heard is we're waiting for the city attorney's office to give a recommendation or an opinion on what level of hardship is legal and then present to you with an option. So that's exciting that that will move forward by July 1st. We are also excited to work on the glitch ordinance, as it's being called by staff, and that we look, one of the things that we had hoped for was a list of all of the issues that would be addressed and the timeline for what that would look like. And so we have been told and promised that it'll be ready for a draft in four to six weeks. So that is also, we wanted to thank Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox for bringing that back up and staff for following up with us as well. And then I wanted to take off that hat and put on my legal aid hat and just make sure that you guys were all aware that we have our last workshop for sealing and expungement of criminal records coming up on June 26th, Saturday at 9:00 a.m., Jack McLean Community Center and the gym, and we'd love for you guys to all be there. It's very critical. Mayor Daley, I just want to thank you so much for your support. I know that all of the commissioners have supported this program, and we would love to see you out there and have you guys educated on this process as well. And since I have a little bit more time, I'm going to take that hat off and just take my citizen hat, my educated citizen hat, and talk about the, just briefly, one of the things that we've been working on as educated citizens is learning about these redevelopments and mixed income housing and things like that. And one of the issues that I just wanted to bring to light, and I know, just looking forward to some of the other projects that are coming down the pipeline and with Orange Avenue being in discussion, is we had discussions with experts, and what they said is that all of the programs that had displacement did not work. That's what they said. That the only ones that work is that when housing is built, they're moved into it, and they tear down that one, rebuild. And that's the only way that they have seen historically nationwide with big cities, small cities, all of those programs that are happening, that that's the only way it works. When you have displacement, the residents, as Commissioner Richardson said, typically do not return, and they are displaced and oftentimes end up homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you send us an email reminder for the Saturday at 9:00 a.m. for the last?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Karen Gunter. Not seeing Karen Gunter. Renata Butler. Renata Butler may have left at the break, so Sabrina Walker.
Walker, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Sabrina Walker, 800 Priscilla Lane, Apartment 7, Tallahassee, Florida 32301. Again, on the Orange Avenue relocation thing. So if we can't find anywhere to relocate, what are they going to do with people living there? My understanding, I just moved there, I've gone on two years. When I moved there, they said I would automatically be put on Section 8 because I was just public housing because they were going to tear down Orange Avenue. The same thing has been spoken of, as you are speaking of now, saying we were going to be out last year, it never happened. This year is the same thing. What is the issue? I mean, they're still waiting on signatures, so I don't feel we're going to be out this year as well. It's so much that needs to be done. Health issues I'm having in that apartment because of mold, because it's old or whatever. I called Brenda Williams, I don't get a return call. I've been to the doctor because I haven't had this much illness in my life from being in that apartment. So again, what are we to do when they are telling us one thing and we are hearing another? We're hearing the same thing you guys, what you read. I have papers last year and the year before that stating we're going to be relocated. They're going to pack us up. We want to know we are secure with all of that and we'll have a place to live with when and if. and if they tear down Orange Avenue. So I just want to be not homeless. You know, I want more information on what it's going to be and not the same thing said every year. And we are still there having to go through this mold issues because there's other tenants with black mold in their apartments, and they have kids. So, you know, we can't get anyone because I've tried. What to do? Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Next speaker is Ruthie, and I am going to let her provide the last name. I'll get close, but I don't think I'll get it quite right.
Thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ruthie Nerville, and I live in Conde Club. I represent older Orange Avenue Tenant Association. Well, our major was starting, and most of the tenant, we was told that it was going to sign us somewhere to stay, and they will pay somebody to relocate us. A lot of tenants are concerned about, they have been looking for places to stay, but a lot of places they look for don't accept tenant with children. And some of them right now live in a five-bedroom. And where are they going to go? Are the vouchers going to be large enough so when they do find a place to stay? And some of them have been told one thing, and some of them have been told another one. So it's been on honorable for years. I told them it's best to speak to the top people because some people have been told the wrong thing. And we had a meeting Monday, and that was one of their major concern. Will they find a larger place to live? And some of them said they heard that they will not be able to move back, that they're going to rent it to somebody else. But what we was told that we would have the first chance to move back first. And a lot of them concerned was about why they just won't, we do the apartment. We have a lot of issues, you know, pipe rusting out and everything. And I was explaining to them that it's best not to leave or listen to your neighbors. Go to the top executive. So we was sent out a flyer, and everything that I was telling the tenant was on that flight. They are waiting on the voucher and stuff, and like, I am a senior citizen, so we would be the last one to relocate. And they promised us that we'll be the first one to move back. And that's what their major concern was. Are apartments going to be large enough for their family? And like, the letter, the flyer that they passed out yesterday was very helpful. Everything they wanted to find out was on that flight. And I had been telling them, they say everything that I told them, because I should have been fourth Avenue.
You're right at three minutes.
Was on that flight. And I really appreciate you all, and y'all have a blessed day.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Tiffany Hill. Mayor, that's the last speaker I have at this time unless somebody brings forward a speaker card in the next three minutes.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good evening. I'm Tiffany Hill, and I live at 504 Putnam Drive. And so I'm going to start out, and of course, I'm going to talk about Orange Avenue with some of the, a couple of residences here that mentioned. I'm going to refresh, if you have not remembered this interview that was done by myself and Ms. Brenda Williams.
I'm a mistress for people here in the area. So the idea is to take out all of these buildings behind me and build brand-new apartments. But one woman tells me that there hasn't been enough transparency in the process.
This whole situation is like a double-edged sword.
Tiffany Hill says she first moved here with her family in the '70s. She's since moved out, joined the Army, and left. But her dad still lives at the Orange Avenue Apartments, along with about 200 other families. Hill worries soon that could change.
If you say that people are not going to be displaced, let me see it in writing. Let's go to the table. Let's get some lawyers or whoever involved. What I can say to the residents here at Orange Avenue Apartments is to trust the process. Those residents who are relocated will have first rights to return to an apartment that has been newly constructed.
Brenda Williams works with the Tallahassee Housing Authority. Williams says what Hill worries about is illegal and something the agency would never do to tenants.
The redevelopment of the property requires that we replace the 200 public housing units with 200 public housing units.
The rest of the apartments will be mixed income. Hill says that's another issue if the redevelopment.
So as, you know, just to refresh everybody, 200 public housing units being replaced with 200 housing units, public housing units, and adding the mix because there is enough property over there to do that. But when did that language change? No one was informed that it went from public housing to not public housing. So they're replacing 200 of the housing, but it's not public housing. So when did that change? We have no idea. We were not told about that. But according to HUD regulations, the recipient must submit directly to HUD Field Office the request for determination that the one-for-one replacement, which is what they were saying. When you talk about replacing one-for-one, that means that you're going to replace one bedrooms to the five bedrooms because that's what's there. And so if you're not...
You're almost at three minutes.
If you're not doing that, then you're violating. And she said it's illegal, and it was never mentioned to the people, and it's still not being mentioned. But they turned in their application. Of course, HUD has not approved it yet, so we got to continue to see if we can make some type of change in that. It's not fair to the people, and I will send out the public request that we did because they did say that we asked about the vouchers. They did the TPV, which is the tenant participation voucher. It's different from public-based vouchers. Public-based vouchers, you can come back. So anyway, I'll send those out to you all so you can review the public request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hill, first of all, I look forward to seeing you tomorrow. We have a meeting scheduled.
Yes, sir.
Number two, thank you for your service to this country. We appreciate it. These are big issues, and we will stay on top of them.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Mr. Clerk?
No further speakers. No, sir.
All right. 6:25, seeing no other speakers. We stand adjourned.